Okay, great, thanks. Good evening, everyone. It is March 5th, 2024, 6:30. This is the time and date for our monthly committee meeting. We do meet as a committee of the whole, so I do call this committee meeting to order. First thing that we have is a presentation. Dr. Messinger?
Yeah, we have Megan Tavani and Josh Wagner with us tonight. They're going to talk a little bit about our SLAM organization, student leaders and mentor. This came out of Climate Committee. I won't say anything because I don't know what all you're going to say. So I'll let you guys come talk. I think if you hit the green button on that, it'll pick you up in terms of...
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. So as Dr. Messinger pointed out, I'm Josh Wagner. I'm an eighth grade American history teacher in seventh and eighth grade gifted. Mrs. Tavani is the seventh and eighth grade guidance counselor. And Dr. Messinger asked us to come and talk a little bit about this group this evening. And so we wanted to give you a little bit of the background, what we're doing currently, and what the kind of our vision going forward is. So, yeah, we can go to that first one. Thank you, Kyle. So, pre-COVID, there was a school climate committee that existed and did a lot of really good legwork. They put out surveys. Some of you probably remember getting those community surveys back in 2019 and with the community and students and staff, and did a lot of groundwork for like a climate committee that works towards improving not only the climate but the culture. And then, of course, you know, March 18th or March 18th of 2020 happened and everything got shut down for a little while. And in 2022, Dr. Messinger started this committee up again. And initially, and Dr. Messinger, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we had about 40 people on this committee at the beginning. It was a huge group of people. And we did have a couple of meetings over the course of a year between '22 and '23. And we got some things done, but as you all know, in a group that big, it's hard to really be targeted in what you're doing. And so we had some kind of big picture goals. But last year in the spring, about this time, Dr. Messinger brought us all together and said, look, I want to split this group into about six-ish committees, something like that. And one of them was leadership and mentorship. And I think we took a little Google form and filled out what we were most interested in. And the committee that was formed that we called Leadership and Mentorship ended up being comprised of one admin, three teachers, a social worker, a guidance counselor, and a community member, actually Director Williams in the capacity as a parent, we put together in a room. And we just kind of talked about, like, if we're going to have a leadership and mentor committee for students, what does that look like? And how do we not just do what already exists in peer helpers or student council or some of these other or class officers? And we spent some time just kind of really talking through what that looked like. And that led to us sending out to every seventh and eighth grade teacher just kind of a questionnaire of, we want you to nominate some students that you think either show, already showing themselves to be leaders, or they have the potential to be a leader, and it just needs to be unlocked. And so we got a list back, and there was a lot of students that were nominated. And we met over the summer, and any student that had three teacher recommendations or more was sent an invite letter to be part of this group. And I believe we ended up with something like 50-ish kids that we sent a letter to. And at our first meeting in the fall, we ended up with about 38 students that ended up coming to the first meeting. So Mrs. Tavani is going to talk about a little bit what we're doing now and what our vision is. And then we do have a couple of students here to talk about what we're doing in SLAM.
So our first event this year, we took the students to Camp Hebron to do some team building activities, and we threw in a little bit of like mini leadership lessons with that. They split us off into groups, and actually, all the pictures in this slideshow are from that event. The kids really enjoyed it. We did our own thing and then met for lunch and then swapped sort of for the afternoon. And so that was a lot of fun. It was just a really good way to kick off the group or the, yeah, the group for the students, for them to get to know each other, get comfortable with each other, and just have a lot of fun. So we did that. And throughout the year, we've been holding monthly meetings. We do one during lunches, and we wanted to alternate. We're still working on getting this like off the ground. We realized our first time we did it that we could have planned differently. So we meet with just the students to talk about what we're doing, where we went ahead. And then the plan is to bring in the new students to talk about what their experience has been like, what has gone well for them, what they need more of, or differently, like when they transition in. One thing that we do right now, and one of our students here has done this, so she's probably going to talk a little bit about that. But we pair new students with one of our SLAM members. And so they will just kind of be a mentor to those students, help them get to their classes for the first few days. We try to make sure that their lunches line up because as a new student, the cafeteria is probably the scariest place in the building, just knowing where to sit, how it works. So that has been something that we've been receiving some positive feedback about. The students are excited to do it, and we're really, that's like one thing that's been, that we're doing really well right now already. So that's exciting. But with these lunches, we want to get their feedback. The first time we invited them, they weren't sure what was going on, so it didn't go as planned, but we were going to clue them in a little better before the next lunch. So it's lunch meetings and then after school with just our SLAM group. Lauren Bruce came in and did a mini leadership training with them, and that was really fun. So we want to do things like that, just mini. It's from 2:20 to 3 o'clock after school. So if they're in sports or stuff, they're not missing too much, but we're trying to just build in little mini leadership activities for them throughout the year. And we are working on, they have their own committees that they signed up for. The tours is one. They are doing a Schoology, new student Schoology group where they're uploading videos, like tours of the building, how you get to different key locations from different parts of the building, so that new students can just have that at their access. They're going to have like a mini tech help thing in that Schoology group where Kyle and his team, they have helped us with, like, what are some really easy things that they can troubleshoot on their own? So we're creating like a document for that, little screenshot guides on how to do certain things on their own, but then we're also going to have our own tech team within the group. So and then our next up right now is just working towards getting new, our current seventh graders, recommendations for them because we're going to, well, Josh is going to talk more about that, but that's where we are now. We're sort of building that Schoology group and looking towards next year because we want to start sort of, I almost said grooming, and I do not like that word, but like bringing in the new seventh graders who are recommended before the end of the school year so that they can hit the ground running at the start of year. So that, because this year, it's sort of like we're building as we go, and I feel like we've grown a lot already, and it'll be really helpful to have the students be a part, the new members be a part of that before we start next year. So Josh is going to talk about moving forward.
All right, so what do we want, what do we see for this as a group? You know, you all know as a board, you're not just thinking about what's going on right now this year. You got to think, you got to have a three-year vision, a five-year vision, a 10-year vision. And we really love what we've seen this year. And so thinking about what we want this to look moving forward is, we'd love to, over the next four years, just add a grade each year. So we started with eighth and ninth this year. So add seventh grade next year, I guess maybe three years. I'm a social studies teacher, not a math teacher. But over the next few years, until we fill out all of eighth through 12th grade, we want to add new incoming eighth graders from the previous year's seventh grade each year until this year's first group of ninth graders, who you'll hear from one in a second, would be seniors at that point. And we'd love to see it where the program grows to the point where we have to, that it's so many students that we can't just have a 2:20 to 3 o'clock meeting after school because there's 100 of them, or 125 of them, or 150 of them. And from there, we can break it down into smaller groups. We can assign mentors from the SLAM group to the incoming students that will then be in SLAM. So we could have 11th and 12th graders mentoring seventh and eighth graders, or eighth and ninth graders, excuse me, that are coming into the program. We'd love to see it eventually grow to the point where it is completely student-run, that we're there as advisors, but they're doing the legwork. They're planning the team building trips. They're coming up with the ideas about bringing in a speaker, like when Mrs. Bruce came in to talk about active listening. So we want to get to that point over the next three or four years. But, yeah, that's kind of our vision to see, and probably have a few other things. We have mentioned there a tutoring program, you know, maybe an after-school tutoring program that students can take part in. We currently at the secondary school have after-school tutoring from teachers. I think it's Monday through Thursday, and it's every other day in a subject base. I think there's two subjects one day, and the Monday, Wednesday, and two subjects. But some students might be more comfortable going to a tutoring session if they knew it was with another student rather than with a teacher, where there might be 15 or 20 kids in the room. They could get potentially one-on-one tutoring help as well. So we have some visions of where we want to go with some things. In fact, Mrs. Tavani, just this afternoon, sent me an idea for another kind of speaker to come in and talk about leadership in a certain area. So we have lots of ideas, and so we wanted to see this continue to grow over the next three or four years, and would love to see it be self-sufficient students, leading students who are becoming leaders, with us just kind of being the guide on the side for them. So Mrs. Tavani is going to introduce. We brought two students. We asked two students to come and share tonight. One is an eighth grader and one is a ninth grader that are part of SLAM, so they're going to come and just talk about what their experience has been like in SLAM so far this year. So Mrs. Tavani is going to introduce.
Okay, Kristen. Kristen Kilcullen is one of our eighth grade students, and she graciously volunteered, courageously volunteered to speak in front of you. So.
So to just kind of build on what Mrs. Tavani said, for our first field trip, when we went to Camp Hebron, we did, we split into two groups. I don't know exactly how many of us were in each group, but we did about two activities. One of the activities was there were four different size platforms, and it went from the biggest and they slowly got smaller. And the goal was to work together to try and fit all of us on. And when we got to the smallest, the record, if I'm not mistaken, was like 12 or 14, and I believe we were able to get 12 of us on, and then a couple of us were not able to fit on altogether. Part of our lunch meetings, we, the most recent lunch meeting, I believe, we watched a video about what leadership is and how we can affect other people's lives and not realize what we did affect other people's lives. Part of what the video described was this guy had given a lady a lollipop, and that had changed her whole perspective on college, but he didn't realize what his small act had done to such, had had such a big impact on that woman's life. In our after-school meetings, we divide into about four or five groups, videos, tours, tech help, and a Schoology course. I'm part of the Schoology course group, and some of the things we've been working on is, we have, we took pictures of all of the administration staff, we got pictures of all of the administration staff, and we are going to put that into the folder so that they know who everybody is and who to look for. We also decided to put in ESL folder on there for people who speak Spanish and are not as fluent in English, so that they also understand what's going on. We put a photo of the map and where we're trying to get a picture of the bus routes, where all of the buses are at the end of the day for them to get on the bus. We have a photo of the activity bus schedule, where the stops are, what time they stop, and which bus stops at what houses or bus stops. We also discussed adding a full, a safe-to-save picture so that everybody knows where they can report their bullying if they need to and stuff like that. The tours group will focus on the most important parts that they have to give tours of. So I believe video will help the tour group by taking videos of them going on tours and showing the most important spots and figuring out what order they should show everything in. So like if the nurse's office, the library, the guidance office, their entire schedule, where to eat lunch, just some simple things like that that could help them adjust to the school without feeling too overwhelmed. Another thing with the after-school meetings is we had Mrs. Bruce or Ms. Bruce come in and talk to us about active listening. Part of our active listening was she took a student up and showed us what active listening was and what active listening wasn't, and just taught us how to make sure we were being active listeners and make sure the person we were talking to felt heard and understood. I believe we have another field trip planned for this April, and this April, we will be going to the Gap, I believe, to work on more team-building exercises so that we know how to work as a team but also separately.
And our ninth grade representative is Olivia Matthews.
Upon receiving the letter sent to my house about participating in SLAM, I was uncertain what to expect. However, I decided to give it a chance and attended the first meeting, and it was worth it. My involvement in SLAM has significantly altered my perspective on being a leader. I now firmly believe that leadership should be discussed in all educational environments. SLAM provides students with a vast opportunity to demonstrate leadership by stepping up, speaking out, and venturing out of their comfort zones to affect a positive change, not only in schools but also in their communities. I've had the opportunity to assist a new student by giving them a tour of the school and helping them locate their classes. Additionally, I sat with them during lunch to ensure they felt welcomed in northern Lebanon. As a new student, it can be quite challenging to adjust to new environment, and it is crucial to make them feel included. Being a leader not only reflects well on our school but also has a positive impact on individuals. Personally, I could say that being a leader has made me feel empowered and confident. Stepping up and taking on a leadership role is not an easy task, but this experience has taught me that stepping up and out of one's comfort zone is an essential life skill to have, and SLAM most definitely represents that. It provides an excellent opportunity to collaborate with other student leaders and mentors and share ideas of leadership and enhancing the school environment. We did have a leadership training field trip together to Camp Hebron, as mentioned, where we engaged in team-building activities and challenges that encouraged us to work together as a team. During these challenges, all members of the team contributed actively and demonstrated individual strengths, which was an extremely rewarding experience. In conclusion, being a part of SLAM has significantly contributed to my growth as an individual leader and is a privilege to be a part of this program, and I'm excited to see what the future holds for it because it is relatively now.
If any of you have any questions about SLAM or what kind of things we're doing, please feel free to email Mrs. Tavani or myself, or direct them to Dr. Messinger, or Director Williams, who is in the group, and we'll be happy to answer those questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to thank you guys. You guys, beyond our wildest dreams, I think, in terms of where you're taking that group, I'm glad I kind of let you go on your own and do your thing there with that subcommittee of the student leaders. I think it's fantastic. And girls, I think those little things that you are doing are going to make quite a difference over the course of time, so very appreciative of what you're doing. Thank you very much. And I have good news. If you don't want to stay, you don't have to stay. You may certainly sneak out if you'd like to.
Any thoughts, board members? I just want to say, I'm so encouraged that you all are doing this. It's a, I mean, this is how culture changes. And Kristin, Olivia, just fantastic. I mean, you're leading by example, just even being willing to come up here and talk to strange faces and share that. So just thank you. I'm excited to see what's going to happen over the next many years as this expands. Anyone else?
Stop, share.
You're good.
I just want to say, you know, for me, you know, I was introduced to the Climate and Culture Committee, you know, a few years ago, and it's been a great experience for me, and it's been a very privilege for me. And, you know, that we have, we have a wonderful group of students, and I can't be more excited about what's been going on. And not just the students, but I really got to know some of the teachers as well as being part of the group. And we have teachers that care, we have staff that care, and they really want to see these kids, not just the kids in SLAM, but all, every student. But they're certainly invested just as much as the students are. It's been wonderful, and it's been a wonderful opportunity for me just to be part of that. And so I'm excited about it and looking forward to the future as well.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the advisors and especially thank you to the kids. This is the kind of thing that really resonates in the community and makes a big difference. So good job, everybody.
If I may add one thing directly, you just said how amazing the kids have been. We actually had a meeting last week, and there was a mandatory track meeting. So throughout the day of the 38 kids, I think Mrs. Tavani and I got about 15 emails or personal stoplights from students saying like, I don't know, I have to leave early for the meet. They were so upset about potentially missing a mandatory meeting or missing a party meeting that they wanted to make sure they weren't going to be in trouble or they were very concerned about missing a mandatory meeting or missing our meeting. I talked to Coach Malinaro and worked it out, and they were able to stay at our meeting for a while, but they cared that much about having this conflict meeting that it wasn't just that they just didn't show up and we didn't see them at all. It was, they went out of their way to email or to come talk to us in person about this conflict they had in the schedule, and they were very concerned about the mandatory in their track meeting. So we worked it out with Coach Malinaro, and they were able to get the both things, but it tells me about the type of student that's a part of the group right now. They, they're taking ownership of their own schedule and their responsibilities, and they care deeply about making sure they're fulfilling their obligations.
Fantastic, thank you. And I'm getting texts from community members that are watching the board meeting, and I'm getting hand clap emojis and one that said slam is a slam dunk. So that's pretty neat. I just thought I'd share that. Any other thoughts, questions? Thank you, great job. Really appreciate it. This is fantastic. Thank you. Thank you, girls, for being here. Parents, too. Okay, we'll move on to the rest of our agenda then. We do not have any public comment this evening, so we'll just move to the, to the items for discussion for our committee meeting this evening. Thank you for being with us again this evening.
Okay, number five. Item 5.1 is the typical approval of minutes, 5.2 student activity count, and 5.3 cash disbursements. Number six, budget and finance. That is our annual agreement with, the Burress County Intermediate Unit provides us with services for homelessness. There's no cost to that one, but they, they're our go-to expert when we run into situations where we need support and answers. So that's our agreement with them. And then the scholarship account certificate to deposits, Liam, would you like to briefly talk about that?
So that's our, we have what we call Scholarship Student Activity Funds at Jonestown Bank. And one of the things at the end of the year is we always have short notice of classes or the scholarships awarded, so we need to go get checks for them. And sometimes it's hard for me to get there, being the only person who was on the account. So what we are basically doing is adding our financial specialists two more to the accounts and giving blanket approval that we can also, throughout the year, reinvest these funds into CDs that are higher right now with interest rates. We're trying to do that, so just that we can actively manage them and that there could be three of us that can go in and access these funds or pull out when we need to for scholarship funds. We actually have some from in there from like the 1950s, 1960s class that used to donate money, I guess, and create these scholarship funds. And we have one that they just contacted us and asked us, she said, I'm the last member of this, and I would like to award the last scholarship and take over the fund. So we get things like that. There is a lot of them in there that we are managing, but it'll just make it easier with three of us.
Well, okay. Any questions or discussion on the six items here? Item six items.
Sorry, nothing at this time for buildings and grounds. Three field trips for you under extracurricular, all high school slash middle school trips, secondary school trips. The environmental science class to the annual horseshoe crab field study. FCS is, I would like to branch out and experience some cuisine from some other countries. And then Dan Lingle with the TSA team to the state conference, April 17 through the 20th. Under curriculum, okay, I think we, I think we now have a model in place. We have some policies for you. And those are there, be a good time now to discuss anything that you saw that you had questions about or any other suggestions to those policies.
I had some concerns about the crowdfunding policy. I know we talked about it a little bit last time. I don't know all the groups here, but I am a little bit familiar with the boosters groups. I'm kind of concerned we're tying their hands a little bit, putting a limit on how much money they can raise without getting a board approval. I'm just thinking the one that I'm somewhat involved in, they might have 10 throughout the year. And also, as far as like the board goes, do we want to approve that many times? Like, I just feel like it could be a lot more work for the board to constantly approve them earning money. And it also, a lot of their fundraisers, they don't have a limit. They don't know how much they're going to make. They're going to, they're going to try to make as much as they can. Where, like, we'll have raffles around Christmas time, we'll raffle off $5 tickets or some kind of gift. And, or when they're selling food at a sports function. I understand why there's a policy, you don't want just people earning money in the name of northern Lebanon and pocketing it and that kind of thing, but I'm a little concerned that it's gonna, you're going to have less volunteers and less people wanting to be involved if we have to be so careful about that we're not over $500 or...
So are those in the, in the boosters, are those typically through a website? Because this crowdfunding, just to be clear, is through a specifically designed website, so it wouldn't pertain to just, yeah, so this is basically internet crowdfunding, correct?
Correct. GoFundMe.com. They're just going to be posting it up there and getting cash.
What if they do like a, something through Facebook?
No, this is for just a specially-designed website that is just for crowdfunding.
Right. If they're doing a raffle on Facebook, that's fine to continue doing that. It's if they're using one of those websites where the money goes into it and it needs to go into a bank account, you know, that is going to eventually just be cash dispersed. It's totally different than if you're doing like your, some of them do golf tournaments or they do raffles of lottery tickets or yetis or whatever they've got going on. Those, you know, are separate.
Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a lot of work on our end as far as approving it and...
Yeah, I agree with that.
Don't call me.
Good question, it's a good question. And we did, we did adjust, so based on our discussion last month, we did adjust the number from 250 to 500. We thought that would give a little more leeway for crowdfunding efforts to not have to come to the board for that. But that's a very good question, but this is, just to be clear, this is just for those special websites, and it's only for crowdfunding that is in the name of northern Lebanon. So the purpose of this is so that the board has oversight on those website crowdfunding efforts that are in the district name. That's, that's what we want to have, make sure we have the oversight over.
And are they, are we going to let booster clubs and different organizations know, like, this is our policy, we cannot? I don't know, if it's new, maybe they're not aware of it.
Yeah, we'll have to probably get something out, too. Tip, a lot of, a lot of these don't apply to booster clubs, but this one would. We'll probably have to get something out to those, to them.
Good questions, good discussion. Anything else? Yeah. Thank you. Any, any other discussion or questions on any of the other policies? Director Kreiser?
Just on the crowdfunding one, would there maybe be, I think it might be advantageous to add a line in there about how this doesn't preclude the other fundraising efforts that might go on, just to call that out specifically. might go on, just to call that out specifically, because the specially-designed websites is not very specific.
Yeah, yeah, it's good. Yeah, I think we can, we can certainly do that. And then we can make that adjustment, and we'll email it out to the boards that we can still vote on this policy next week. That's a, that's a great one. So we'll, we'll send that out if you have any feedback. Just let us know. That's good, good point. Okay. Did you get that now?
I did, yep. We'll get that out tomorrow.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion on policies? It's good discussion, thank you. Okay? None? All right.
Okay. 10, all we have is, 10.1 is our substitute list that we have all the time with additions and subtractions to that. 10.2 is the column movement for Roger Bailey. And 10.3 is our, is a clinical experience agreement for students that are attending Western Governors University, which is online, that want to do a clinical experience in a classroom. There's an agreement there for them.
Questions? Okay. Move on then.
That is it for us.
Okay, great. So that's it for the committee meeting this evening. We, it's not a huge agenda. So like we said, if you have any questions during the course of the next week, just let us know so we can adjust it for next week's meeting. And that's it. Anything else for the go-to-the-order? Okay, hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.